All right, we're ready. Uh, eight oh four, not too bad. All right, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, we are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, we have exactly one action item on the agenda today specifically to discuss the rebate. Just to recap, we approved it, went over to the county commissioners, it was not approved. So, um, everyone came back, kind of reset, and I believe Mrs. McCourt has a proposal.
Do you want to approve the agenda?
Oh, yeah, yes, I should be doing that. All right, shall I have approval of the agenda?
I move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, questions, sorry. Now, Mrs. McCourt.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, yes, there was 1.5 million dollars that was not approved by the county commissioners. So, this is an alternative proposal for your consideration. We thought that it would be valuable to provide some background information on the cost to both St. Mary's County Public Schools and our employees on some of the plans that we're currently offering. So, on the triple option two individual plan, the total cost for that plan is $10,431, of which St. Mary's County Public Schools provides an 80% contribution of $8,345, and the employees provide a 20% contribution of $2,086. That amount is paid by the employees on a bi-weekly basis at the amount of $87 per pay. At two pays, should you consider a two-pay holiday, that would equate to a return to the employees of $174. That would equate to a new annual amount paid by the employees of $1,912, which equates to an 18.3% contribution instead of a 20% contribution for the employees, and an 81.7% contribution by SMCPS instead of an 80% contribution. So, at 81.7%, that means that St. Mary's County Public Schools would not be providing $8,345, but instead $8,519. And the employees would be providing $1,912 contribution.
Okay, so, can you just stay on that slide for a second, if you don't mind? Well, actually, go through the other ones for the family and then...
So, the family plan, for comparison purposes, the overall cost is $29,075. At 80% for St. Mary's County Public Schools, our contribution is $23,260, and the employees' contribution at 20% is $5,815. That equates to $242 per pay, times two pays for a holiday pay proposal would equate to $484 being returned to the employee. The new annual amount paid would be reduced to $5,331, representing the 18.3 and 81.7% split. St. Mary's County Public Schools' new contribution amount would then be $23,744, and the employees' contribution amount then would be $5,331. Do you want to ask questions now before I leave?
Yeah, well, I just want to clarify because where the thing, where this whole thing kind of went off the rails with the county commissioners is because the total healthcare rebate, what they did during the meeting was they took this one and a half million dollars that we are proposing, and then they divided it by the total amount of the healthcare rebate. And in their quick math, it turned out to be more than the 20% that the employees were paying in, correct? So, in their minds, they were then taking the, or making the assumption that the employees were getting a greater benefit than what we had negotiated under the collective bargaining agreement. And then that's, I think, the crux of the matter as to why it was denied. So, without having any questions back and forth prior to that county commissioner meeting, that's where I think this whole thing was so confusing because if the question could have been asked of you or your staff as to what the individual family rates were, rather than doing a quick math calculation on the fly during the meeting, I think some of this could have been alleviated. So, I just wanted to clarify that because that was, if no one has seen or watched the county commissioner meeting, that was, that was the gist of their, of their, of their argument as to why to deny the full one and a half million dollars. So, and if you look at it this way, which in your defense, you had no questions about it, it had been approved in the prior two years without question, so, no one had this, you know, this information available during the presentation. So, just to recap, if, with the healthcare holiday, they are still paying 18.3% of the cost, which they have been paying at 80/20 split since the contract, I mean, that was part of the negotiated agreement, so that has been the employees' contribution for the past four years.
Yes.
Okay.
So, the cost to the employees currently per pay is $206,424, and that's for all of our employees on a bi-weekly basis. The cost for then two pays would be $412,848. And for our retirees, the deduction per month is $329,609. I lay out the two and one for the employees to retirees because their employees make a bi-weekly contribution, our retirees make a monthly contribution. So, the alternative proposal to you is to use the 1.5 million dollars to provide two employee healthcare holidays at the amount of $412,848, one retiree healthcare holiday at the amount of $329,610, and an OPEB contribution of $757,842, for a total of 1.5 million dollars.
Um, I would like to ask you, if you took and made the employee healthcare holiday to four, and the retiree healthcare holiday to two months, it would come out, if, you know, please, correct me if I'm wrong, come out to $1,484,914. That would be exactly the 20%, which is where I think that the county commissioners were getting hung up on, that it was over the 20% that we were giving back. So, if we gave exactly 20% back and not did over, do you know what I'm saying? And not did, if it was 20% versus 18, you know, like, giving like, a little bit over, what would the total be? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Are you asking what the...
If you did four pay periods at giving back exactly 20% that the employees put in and the retirees put in versus giving a little bit over to make more pay parity at the 18.3%, you know, like, for the year, what would the cost be out of the 1.5?
Are you asking for the cost, or are you talking about the percent?
Or the total.
No, the, what it would change their percentage to?
No, I don't want, well, change the percentage to 20%, not 18.3. And I would like to know what the total is when it comes down to the bottom line, what we are providing back to the employees.
Well, so, the delta would be, the delta would be, also, part of the confusion comes from the fact that we, as a system, paid 40 mil, $40,892,000 for healthcare. And I believe one of the county commissioners actually posted the modified retrospective settlement for self-insured for St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Yeah.
So, it gives the, it gives the total amount that we paid as a system. And at the end, because we are self-insured, we do recognize a 1.368991 savings, a deficit. Then underneath on the same thing, it gave the pre, the drug rebate, these are rebates.
No, okay, so, I'm asking, out of the 1.5 million, okay, what would, if we gave 20% back, not 21%, you know, the 21% back, what would the cost be?
The, as, as it was presented at the commissioner meeting, and it was specifically, it wasn't, I think it was commissioner, President Commissioner Randy Guy specifically said, "So, you have a $3.5 million rebate that came back to us," and that's right. So, if you take all the other, everything else out of it, I think that that kind of gets confusing. But, we received a benefit back to the system of four quarterly payments for rebates, for RX rebates that totaled approximately $3.5 million. If you take 20% of $3.5 million, rough Scott math, ends up with $700,000.
742,450, well, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, so, to read his point, so, if we do it the way we initially proposed, using Commissioner Guy's math...
We're actually using 40% of the rebate.
Well, right, we're using 30, 30.9. The rebate was 4.8, and that total is...
No, the rebate was 3.5.
Okay, I'm going back to the 1.5.
4.8 was, was also the settlement at the end, where we were, we were to the positive at the end.
Okay, so, keep going with Scott Mathin.
So, which, I'm just saying, so, the only thing we were discussing was specifically, so, the, how we've gotten here is that because of the way we have negotiated with Care First, we afford ourselves certain rebates based on the, the behavior of those covered by the plan. So, the more they use CVS and they use a formulary whatever prescription, and the, the better their behavior, the more aligned to the construct, the confines of the plan, the more money we get back, and it's, there's no like, 20/80, there isn't. It's, the rebate, and this is the challenge, is the rebate comes at the end of the year, we can't incorporate it into the budget because it, we don't receive it until late October, early November, and we have to book it back to the previous year. It's, it's bonus money.
Okay, see, I get all that, but I guess I was trying to get down to, getting, getting down because this seemed to be something that Commissioner Guy was stuck on, was the 20%.
Right.
Right, so, if we do...
So, that's what I was getting back to, how much...
So, if we do it this way, that Tammy has up on the board, if I take the 412 and the 329, it gets me to 742 and change. If I divide that by the 3.5 million dollars, then I'm at 21.2%.
Correct.
If we did it the other way, we were at 42.4%. So, that was, that must have, that was...
Right, it just, it was a half it.
Right.
So, right, so, if you just say there's a $3.5 million rebate, and to the commissioner's way of thinking, everything needs to be an 80/20 split. And we've never operated like that.
Okay.
We've always operated, and we haven't had this amount, this is the largest amount of money we've ever had in rebates. Last year, we had...
We had 2.9 million.
2.9, the year before that, we had 1.67, something like that. And the year before that, we didn't even have a million dollars. So, we keep on getting a larger rebate because our employees are adhering to the plans that we put forward. And that is why, and that is, and that is why our curve of cost for healthcare, where the general trend is close to 10%, ours has been falling below 5%. And that's completely due to the behavior of our employees and the, their informed engagement in their plan. So, two years ago, we had enough money to give three healthcare holidays because we were so impressed that we got 1.6 million dollars back. Last year, we gave four because we were so overjoyed that we got 2.9 million dollars back. And this year, when we saw that we were going to recognize a $3.5 million, we said, "Oh, my gosh, our employees are doing such a wonderful job. We're going to continue what we did the year before and the year before." And then we used the rest of the money for system initiatives, including retire, early retirement notification incentives, so that our employees can also then not only take care of and be engaged in their healthcare, but also in their long-term planning, whether they want to retire or not. So, that then compels them to come in and to talk with Leslie Fancella and to do a long-term planning to understand the other benefit that you receive from working with the system, which is retirement benefits. So, that's where we got. And to Mrs. Bailey's point, if we would have known ahead of time, we could have had a long conversation about the money, how it's used, engaged in what we're doing. We really just believe that we are moving forward with, our employees are doing an incredible thing. It's, it's earning us money back. We want to get money back to our employees, and this makes a huge, when you go back to the slide, triple option healthcare family plan, I mean, that was $900 of benefit that was going to go into every single family's pocket in December and January, some of the most, you know, exuberant months, December, yay, January, oh, my gosh. Right? Because it was so widely, it was so well-received the year before, and the year before when we were able to do three, that was. So, but to President Commissioner Guy, and they're completely correct, this is fund-balance money. It is not in our original budget, and they have complete control over, they can veto the amount. So, to align to exactly what was presented by...
Approved, not vetoed.
Pardon me, approved. I feel like I got vetoed. Um, line item veto. Kind of felt like that.
It did, yes.
Um, but to President Commissioner Guy's, the, the, if we did apply an 80/20, we have got to compromise here that does give everybody a month's worth of reprieve, so that benefit, and we're still giving another $750,000 to the long-term benefit of employees by making an OPEB contribution, which Commissioner Colvin so noted on, in the paper and in the BayNet, we are underfunded on our OPEB, and so, we do need to make up, we do need to make up contribution to that as well.
But as is everyone else in the state, it's not just us.
Without a doubt.
Exactly.
Without, with...
Every county and every school system in the state is all underfunded.
Abs...
We are not, not being diligent.
Absolutely.
You know, and I, it's, I find it disappointing that they, that the commissioners does, don't see this as I do, I think we all do, which is rewarding our employees for taking such responsible...
Active engagement.
Active engagement in their healthcare usage.
Right.
Um, you know, the slides that you showed us about, or the information you shared with us about the decrease in emergency room visits and the cost of those, down to urgent care and the cost of that, and then utilization of telemed for our employees and how cost-effective that is, and how convenient for our employees. They're, they're doing everything we could hope for. And I would have appreciated the opportunity to, to really substantively show that our employees, the return on their investment in their health.
I have something that I would like to read. Okay. I, along with my fellow board members, were elected to St. Mary's County Public School Board of Education. The citizens of St. Mary's County elected us to oversee the school's budget and spend it responsibly. We made an informed decision to provide a healthcare holiday to the staff who participates in our healthcare. The staff has been responsible in making wise choices when seeking healthcare for themselves and for their families. Our employees have an 80/20 split for their healthcare, where the county employees' healthcare is split. On 4/4/19, at a county commissioner meeting, when discussing county employee healthcare renewal, it was stated the county employee healthcare is 85/15 split. According to Commissioner Guy, and I quote, "We are saving our employees hundreds of dollars a year by giving them an 85/15 hundreds." Now, I believe it's well, way over hundreds. Commissioner Morgan, when talking about healthcare changes, and I quote, "We strive to take care of our employees the best we can. Structurally, we are behind in pay, and we are trying to make that up simultaneously. I think $36 a year is trying to balance out one side against the other. Keeping at 6.6 helps the employees at the end of the day, which is our goal, helping the people because we have people to, people to stay and work for our county instead of going somewhere else and bouncing around." That was when they were talking about their, their renewal for their healthcare. Several of the county commissioners have chosen to take their voice to social media instead of coming to, to members of the board to ask for clarification, implying that the board is not being transparent, has been dishonest, and does not understand the big picture. I take offense to these comments. A rumor I will also put to rest on some of the social media is that employees who didn't contribute to the healthcare, to healthcare will also receive a rebate. This is wrong. If you didn't put into the system, you will not receive a healthcare holiday. When discussing the school employee healthcare holiday on 11/19, quoting Commissioner Morgan, "I have a hard time this year going back with everyone, working hard to achieve healthcare savings across the board to do this again." This was about providing the healthcare holiday to our employees. But yet, Commissioner Morgan, you did not have a hard time with your decision to remain the fourth lowest county in which the county employees pay out of pocket, and that is a quote from your healthcare presentation on 4/2/19. Don't you believe increasing the cost of $36 per year to county employees' healthcare and providing, producing a savings of $95,000, which is almost $100,000, would be a responsible way to start saving money for the county? Don't you believe changing to an 80/20 split for your county employees would provide even a larger saving to the taxpayer dollars of this county? To put this in perspective, this is what our school employees have agreed to do. They made a conscious decision to put the school system on a more sustainable footing. Our employees have made significant change to both healthcare plan and costs. They have been responsible on how they utilize their healthcare, purchasing generic meds when possible, and may, have made instrument, have been instrumental in leading the way on using telemed. They have made decisions regarding their healthcare, in turn, providing a positive outcome. We need to recognize this. The fact remains, school employees pay more into healthcare than county employees. It was the board's decision to take this portion of the rebate to reward the staff for their responsible choices. In the long run, this has saved the taxpayers to be able to put some of the rebate back into our schools, school resources, resources such as safety and security, and to decrease the amount from the county to fund certain required projects. County commissioners, I'm going to take a page out of your playbook. We are competing with other counties and with bait, and with the base to retain good employees. In order to retain good employees, we need to have pay parity and provide incentives. County commissioners, you believe that it is okay to provide incentives to retain county employees, yet you want to micromanage the elected Board of Education members and prevent us from doing the same for school employees. I am holding firm to providing the four-pay period healthcare holiday for staff.
Jim, do you have any questions?
No.
You don't want to follow that?
No, I can't follow.
Mary?
Okay.
More rebates dollars we get back if our employees are being prudent in using our healthcare benefits. They have reduced our healthcare costs substantially and ever-increasing. This was the effort of HR, going to the school sites and talking to groups and individually, to individuals. With the new plan, we make a contribution to OPEB. And that's in keeping with our promise to future retirees and our current employees with the rebate, but less than what the Board of Education wanted to do. But they will get a rebate. This is the first time this has happened with us. Usually, it is approved. So, now, moving forward, both sides need to talk together about the fund balance. Since it's going to be, seem to be an issue, and they do have the right to approve or disapprove the balance. So, it is up to us to put forth a good effort to talk with them, and they talk with us if they have any questions about what we are doing, so that we can move forward with this process of giving our employees a much-needed rebate. My option would have been to give the employees the four pay periods and the retirees as original in the budget, but they have disapproved that, so we have to move forward from here.
On this slide, if, if we did the four pay holidays and the equivalent for retirees, what would be the SMCPS employee split of that?
83.5. When we, when we modeled it out, it was 83.5. It was still less than 15, you know, there...
Still more than 15%?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, you know, I'm, I'm frustrated that we're not given the opportunity to sit down and have staff make the case for what we're doing when we send over a request to the commissioners. I think, to Mrs. Bailey's point, we would have been much better served, as well as the commissioners having been better served, when given the opportunity to have a two-way conversation rather than to impose without being fully informed. At the same time, they have, they have effectively dug themselves in on this. And I'm very aware of the fact that we have more budget discussions to come, and and as such, given the commissioners' history of doing things, I think we're better served to ensure that, in the long run, that we go forward with a, the goodwill of the commissioners in hopes that they will receive our upcoming budget in a positive way. So, this option would not be my first choice. But, at the end of the day, it may be the better option, all things considered. So, I want to be able to do something for our employees, even if it's not the, the full impact that one would have hoped. Because we want them to continue to utilize their healthcare in a, in a responsible way to, to decrease the cost for all of us. I think being able to do four, four pay holidays would have shown that quite well. But, that is not to be, would appear.
I guess, as with most things between the budget, between our board and the county commissioner board, is it, it seems like the employees and the student, either the employees or the students are always caught in the middle. So, today, the employees are caught in the middle. So, I agree with you, I don't want to quote-unquote punish them because of the lack of communication coming from the county commissioners on requests that we make. So, I agree, it's not my first choice. We had an additional option, I believe, that Dr. Smith and I were talking around, that just couldn't, just, it wasn't, it wasn't then fair across the board for everyone. So, by default, this is where we are today. Anyone have any other questions?
The only thing I'd like to just clarify for those following along at home, the Board of Education, it is the board's budget. So, when, so, when I'm brought before the county commissioners and they want to have a, a change and a negotiation, a conversation about, well, this for that, it's not a decision that I can make there in front of them, and they well know. Any modification to the budget has to then come back before you to be heard publicly. This cannot be done in an executive session, this cannot be done offline, this has to be done publicly. That's part of the Open Meeting Act of St. Mary's County and larger of Maryland, where we have to discuss exactly why we're doing what we're doing, so you have to do exactly this. And each one of that, then, once this is, what, you take action, whatever that action is, if you do take action and wish to move forward, then we will prepare all of the presenting documents and a cover letter that then gets sent over to the county commissioners, that then has to get scheduled to go before them again. There is a process. It's not as though you can just get down, we can talk about it back and forth and go, okay, good to go. It is your budget, this is, this is absolutely your decision with the upcoming budget for 2021. Staff has put together a whole bunch of recommendations, will present it publicly multiple times, but at the end of it, it is your decision as an elected board how money is spent in St. Mary's County Public Schools. So, that's why we are where we are right now with this. And if you are to not approve it, then we would, if we, you wanted us to come back and do something else, then we would pull this down, and we would rework something else that we could come before you in January seeking your approval. If you approved it then, then it would go forward. Nothing moves forward without the, the majority rule of the Board of Education. So, that's why, that's why we're back with you. And that's why, when we were there, and I'm trying to figure out numbers going back and forth, there can't be any decision made, it all has to be brought back. That is the process, that is the publicly deliberative process of, of the state of Maryland.
My point in saying I wish we could have had the conversation was, if, I think if they had gone through what was, has been presented... I think if they had, um, gone through what was, has been presented, they would have understood why we were making the recommendation we were making.
Could this go, a question, can this go back with an explanation of the slides?
Oh, well, without a doubt, and, and, I mean, this is a.
Without us approving or disapproving at this point?
If.
So, they could, um.
No, because no.
No, it can't go, it can't go before them unless you approve it.
They wrote it down, so we have to take something back to them, they, it's not, it's not just like, that's what they tried to get Dr. Smith to do, like, to agree to half of it. He's like, I can't do that.
Well, I want to have a conversation for a better understanding.
I think we can do that going forward for next year, but I think we are where we are.
Exactly.
If you, if you don't do anything, if, if you, if this doesn't get approved, that one point five million dollars then goes to our fund balance, which our fund balance would then be.
Seven and a half.
I think seven point five million dollars approximately. And that would be the fund balance that we carry. Now, that's nothing like the county commissioners' ninety-two point three million dollar fund balance that we'll hear about later today.
Oh, yeah, that's the extra nine million they weren't expecting.
Well, no, there's about, about fourteen million dollars have gone to their fund balance, which is now ninety-two point something, ninety-two million dollars. So, we are over here agonizing over how best to take care of our employees.
Right.
Um, and so this would go then, and we'd have a seven and a half million dollar fund balance, which we would then work on and incorporate into the 2021 budget as part of that process. Because we believe that you should, we're going to be lean and mean and run with about a three percent fund balance, so.
So, just to summarize, at the end of the day, a family of four within our system will receive a two-pay period healthcare holiday.
January.
Good, right, well, yes, in January, whenever.
Well, it depends on when the county commissioners approve it.
Exactly, right.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, so at least the employees will be getting something.
Ninety-two point eight.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Fund balance, ninety-two point eight million dollars, fourteen point, two million dollars more than last year.
Okay, any more questions, discussion? All right, so anyone to, uh,
Roll over the dot.
Give me a motion?
Um, I move that the Board of Education approve the presented increase in the budget for FY 2020 and approve submittal of this budget adjustment to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval as required by the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All those in favor? Am I opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion is carried. All right, so, to continue this one, we have a joint meeting of the county commissioners at nine o'clock over in their, uh, meeting room. So, uh, we are adjourned, and I'll see you over there.